You are watching Access the Port County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 11th meeting of the Michigan City Sanitary Board Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesses the port county.org.
Thank you for attending the special meeting of the Michigan City Sanitary District Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, September 11th. And start off with roll call. Don Babcock.
Yeah, man.
Tim Warner.
President.
Linda Simmons. We have a quorum. We're going to start off with our business manager. He has a few things to say.
Yes, redevelopment was approached and it's a little bit of urgency thing that I could put on the agenda for tonight, but it's the Franklin Street Minor Subdevelopment. So if you're familiar with the Sears Road Book property that's St. John's and Franklin, they're at the bank on the corner. They want to subdivide that and separate the properties there. But in doing so, they want to give us the separate system that lies underneath the Market Mall property. And you can see it, they're heading to a map. It runs north to south. It runs from Highway 20 to St. John's Road.
It's a private sewer, not a sewer. Or sewer, excuse me.
Yeah, you had me going. That sounds like a road cat sewer.
So I, in my view, and when I was on the board previously, this was brought up before, and I had a long conversation with my prior predecessor, and I don't agree with it because there's no reason for us to take it out unnecessarily. Because if more businesses grow within that Market Mall property, we'll be liable for whatever's on your ground. If they, if it exists and it belongs to them, they're liable. So whatever outbuildings they would put in there. So my recommendation as right now would be to deny the acceptance of this easement.
So, questions? So, yeah, so, so it just says easement versus, is there a sewer in the easement we would take ownership to, or is this?
They would give us all, they want to give us this.
I mean, but this is, this is land. It's not a sewer.
Yeah, they want to give us a sewer and give the easement on top for us to access. Correct, basically what it, I mean.
Because more or less, we have the easement with us already, I assume.
It's not ours, it's theirs, so we don't have any, anything to do with this sewer section.
So let me, so let me ask this, if, how is the church served across the street?
They're on a sewer in St. John's Road, I think.
Oh, so they're not on, my point is, is if we aren't cautious here, are we neglecting serving somebody else that's already in play? That's already in there?
The, the outlets to the south of there, the physical therapy, all that are connected to the sewer.
Walgreens.
Yeah.
BW3s, the, yeah, all of that's connected, including your side, Linda, which was easy.
Yes.
The Market Mall side. So let's just say the Market Mall decided to put in 10 more outbuildings there.
Yeah.
Now, we would be responsible for that comparable to them being responsible because they own the property.
Okay.
So we don't really, I don't really feel necessary to have that.
No, I understand.
They've got that and they're going to redo it if it's old. I'm assuming that the Market Mall was built in 1970-ish, so it could be even prior to that, it just exists.
Yeah, that's why, it gets delicious.
So why do, why would we want to take on another project, maybe, that we would not be able to afford down the road?
Yeah, I'm just asking some general question. So, so let's say they're bought, all right, Market Mall goes nuts and they develop something big there. So do they extend a sewer line out to another line that we have someplace?
This is, this connects to?
This is their existing one that, that if they put a new big something in, it'd probably be a new line from them to us in the street or someplace else, if I'm correct.
Right, so I have no idea what's between Highway 20 and St. John's. I have no idea. It's their property. It flows, it works, but if they put more building, it, it more flows.
And it's common for a new client, commercial, industrial, to pay for their own sewer to connect to us.
Correct, absolutely. All that is private property, correct.
And the one thing I would add with this easement, the way it's described now, if this parcel develops, we would have to vacate the easement in the future for something they may want to change.
Build on top of it. Yeah, I got you. Yeah. Okay. Well, I move we accept our leader's recommendation.
I will second the proposal.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I'll send the letter to that.
That's good to know, though, because I know we've had some problems over the years as well, Planet Fitness, so there'll be a lot going on down the road.
There'll be a lot of, I mean, a lot of asphalt replaced.
Yes.
Really wanted that.
Okay, moving on, we've got Lake Avenue, Highway 12 lift station project. Al, Mr. Wallace.
First of all, thank you Commissioners for agreeing for the special meeting this evening. These next couple of legend items that are very time critical, so appreciate having the meeting tonight. For Lake Avenue Highway Lift Station Project, we put this, the reason for the timeliness is the schedule moving forward. We put this together late Friday, Monday this week, and was not able to get it into the board packet, but a quick summary, back in February, the Redevelopment Commission approved a funding commitment to the Santer district in the amount of $276,000 to fund the engineering for this project, the Lake Avenue Highway, Highway 12 Lift Station Project. And if you recall, the importance of the project is there's three main sanitary sewer networks connecting all at the Amtrak Turning Bridge, all sanitary sewer from Washington Park Beach area, all sanitary sewers from Lake Shore Drive, and then sanitary sewers coming down Highway 12 from the Coward Plaza. The all-interest system, which the purpose of this would be to relieve about two of those legs off of the system, provide better improved service for current customers and allow for future development. And that's part of the reason why the Redevelopment Commission got on board, to foster system improvements that could lead to development. At the time, so after the Redevelopment Commission approved a funding commitment, the Santer district entered into agreement with Great Lakes Engineering for that engineering. They covered several items, topographic survey, route survey, design services, construction services, and the like. During the preparation of the proposal, there were a couple different options of where to route the sewers. And so at the time, we got the initial Great Lakes proposal, it did not include geotech services, soil borers. So as we've been doing the engineering over the last few months, we've now determined the route, we know where the sewer's going, so to complete the engineering, we need to get some soil borers and some geotech. Working with John here from Great Lakes, we've estimated soil borers to be somewhere in the order of about $25,000. I talked to Skyward Europe last week, city planner, and appeared before the Redevelopment Commission this past Monday, presented the request to Redevelopment Commission to amend their funding agreement to include $25,000 to cover the sewer borers, and to be safe in case there were any contingencies, was very thankful that Redevelopment Commission approved amending the funding agreement for not to exceed cost of $30,000. So in our agreement that was signed with Great Lakes early in the year, they have a stipulation for amending to the contract if both parties agree in writing. So I approached Mr. Kremke, and he submitted change order request that's in your board packet, that's the original there, identifying that we've, to kind of speed this up, the Santer district would have the option of going out trying to get through quotes, but that'll be, take another few weeks. The schedule need is, since this is a grant funded project, we're working with bond counsel from the Redevelopment Commission, Barnes and Thornburg, and working with the Indiana Finance Authority, Baker Tilly's working on that as well. We have a hard date of December 3rd, having bidding complete. So on our schedule, we work back to at the November meeting, November 20th, have bids are due to be open at this public meeting. So we'll have at that point bids in hand, so we could meet the schedule of bond counsel and Baker Tilly to comply with Indiana Finance Authority requirements. So John, work on the schedule to then at our October meeting, regular October meeting for the board here, present the final plan specifications, request approval from the district for authority to publish the bids and kind of go through that bid process. So our official request of the Commissioners is to consider, it's change order one to Great Lakes, and then not to exceed amount right now of $25,000.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple routinely. I'm not a master murderer at this with you guys, as you guys are, so. Is this above the $276,000, which was originally authorized?
Correct, yes.
So the total's going to be $300,000, maybe 305 in total?
Right.
And the RDC's more or less agree to fund that?
Yes.
For the engineering? And we need the soil boring and the geotech in order to get a quality bid, is that correct?
Yes. We're putting in a new sanitary sewer lift station, it could be several, 15, 20 feet deeper, so we're trying to get. And it's on an old railway, you know, on an old rail bed used to be.
Sure.
We just want to know what's under there, make sure we know what's there.
So the overall project probably is going to be a million, 2 million, 3 million?
For the whole?
Well, for the whole lift station, I'm just looking at the $300,000 in engineering services, that's usually.
Actually, the entire project for everything is, the initial estimate's about $4.00 million.
And of this, so you guys are the more engaged engineers, and general engineering ends up being some portion of a project, and it's usually less than 20%. This sounds like it's more like 10, 15, maybe, something like that, so.
Yeah.
Well, they're paying for it, it seems like a deal to me, and it's something we need, and so my, my motion is, we accept the recommendation from Mr. Yagalski that we should move ahead with this.
Absolutely.
And the amount not to exceed $25,000 for the amendment number one to professional service agreement dated April 4th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye. Motion passed.
Yep. And then Commissioners, the next item, Santer district Michigan City rate analysis. Dan Cutshaw's here from MS Consultants, and Jenny Miller from Burke as well, if they want to come up, they'll be part of the presentation. They do have a color version of the rate analysis. And Dan will get into kind of the timeliness of why we're meeting tonight, but one thing we wanted to do was, and kind of the mayor tasked us with, is kind of doing assessment of the overall wastewater treatment plant, due to the age of the plant, the status of current equipment, the challenges with the limited footprint, to evaluate how we can make improvements, improve reliability, convert to more automatic features of the wastewater treatment plant. So along with that, ultimately, there'll be some cost involved in trying to do some of those improvements. And then at each regular meeting, the boardsman getting updates on the overall financial status of the district, where the district stands in terms of cash on hand, projections. So one thing we're asked to do is look at a kind of representative wastewater rates in the area. So on the handout we provided in your packet, and then the color version today, is we show kind of on the left-hand side there, city portage in Michigan City, right now, based on 5,000 gallons per month, kind of typical usage for residential home, similar rates, portage is 32.50, Michigan City is 33.77. However, both of those rates are rather old. That portage number was from 2016, the Michigan City number is from 2012. So those are the current rates that are right here that are paying us right now. And then the three black boxes, those are taken from Baker Tilly, they're one of the premier rate analysis consulting firms in the state, so they'll do periodic updates comparing rates all across the state. So what we highlighted is, they differentiate rates based on population. So we looked at sewer rates for cities with a population of more than 25,000, which is, you know, kind of puts us in that category. In 2015, the average sewer rate across the state for a population of 25,000 was 42.74. Five years later, 2020, it bumped up to 46.32. And then more recently, in 2020 report, cities with population greater than 25,000 was up to $73.27. And then you can see some of the other nearby cities, Valparaiso, 2016 rates were 47.79, Crown Point rates 55.35. Chesterton's had two rate increases, a kind of a stepped increase over time, and their current rates are about 82.06. So if you see the kind of black trend line of what population 25,000 or greater are doing, the district hasn't had a rate increase since 2012, so that's 12 years ago. So we're kind of operating at somewhat of a rate deficit where at some point, we need to evaluate current costs, capital improvement needs, and kind of work that into a defensible analysis of where rates potentially should go. So the other thing, just want to talk about real quickly before I turn it over to Dan, is we included in the board packet just some reference material, the mechanism for funding wastewater infrastructure projects in Indiana primarily goes through the Indiana Finance Authority, they have the Wastewater State Revival Loan Fund. And then to be able to participate in that fund, potential projects have to complete this long checklist of items, with the main item being this preliminary engineering report. It's a 14-page guidance document, it includes 20-year utility leads and capital improvement plan, and includes an asset management plan. So there's a considerable amount of engineering and data that has to go into a preliminary engineering report in order to be able to support a potential future funding of a project. The benefit of going through Indiana Finance Authority is you have access to low interest loans below market rate, so there's a huge incentive to save money for borrowing costs by going through the Indiana Finance Authority. And by doing the preliminary engineering report, it demonstrates the entity has done due diligence to look at many different alternatives and identify critical needs and come up with a full asset management plan and capital improvement plan. So kind of laying the groundwork to show, we haven't had a rate increase in 12 years. We believe any moving forward to consider new rates, we have to look at some capital improvement projects. And that's how we brought Dan on board from MS Consultants, who does, whose company does wastewater treatment plant work and is routine business. And then I'll turn it over to Dan to kind of talk about his thoughts on how to move forward on that.
Well, good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight, or today. As an introduction, Dan Cutshaw, I'm an engineer with MS Consultants. And Al is correctly doing a lot of wastewater treatment plans of this size and larger. And we've done a lot of work with SRF and IFA to get money for communities. There is opportunity to get forgivable loans, it's never guaranteed. Same thing as a grant, but you don't pay them back, so it's a good thing. They, we've got the last three treatment plant projects we've worked on, two out of the three have gotten forgivable loans. So that is always a possibility. Now, they, they did get a go at a money over the last three or four years, some of that just depends on federal financing, but there is a possibility. So we always look for that, and we always apply for that. So what you have in front of you is a standard engineering agreement to EJCC, and I'll go over a couple things with you guys real quick, but feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions.
Can I stop you just for a second?
Yes, please.
And so you all know, Baker Tilly is also in the process of being engaged to evaluate our current rate situation and our, I think we have some deficits in certain areas and budgets and things, and so they're actually going to be evaluating the rates and then the numbers that we would come up with in this, for capital planning, probably phased type of projects, they would evaluate that in their rate analysis, and I believe they are being engaged directly through the city.
So as part of the analysis, I'm assuming we will have a capital spend and an ONM spend, relative rates and the ONM spend would impact employee wages?
Yes.
And the capital spend is the quality of our plant, right?
Yes.
Just generally?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. So this is for wastewater treatment plan only, not our production system?
This engineering analysis is just for the wastewater plant, with the exception of an early action project, which is that Monon Lift Station that you had talked about and the pumps with the holes in the casings and just that.
So stormwater is a separate activity?
Stormwater's separate, but we've kind of flagged a couple projects, maybe I'll let Dan go through this a little bit, and then he can talk about maybe some of those early action projects besides the plant that we're looking at.
Okay, so as I mentioned, this is a standard engineering agreement with a base body that are in front of it, which is signed, and then there's two, so they, you guys flip to Billy, page 17, page one, so it starts over on exhibit A. That is, in bold there is the scope. So what we plan of proposing to do is provide you with three reports that are required for the SRF financing programs. They want to see a preliminary engineering report, a under item E, capital improvement plan, and under number two, an asset management plan. So those three reports is what we will provide. And as part of that, I can run through all this, and I will, and again, if there've been questions, please stop me. I'm going to start on A. What we plan to do is work with Christopher Burke, and he can prepare a biowin model with infant nutrient testing. What this model will tell us is what the best treatment process is based on what your incoming nutrient levels are and chemicals and all that sort of stuff. You know, in 40 years since the plant had been majorly overhauled, there's been a lot of new technology, and we'll look at that, and we'll give you a lot of good options on that. So we'll also evaluate the capacity and limitations, where you have issues potentially, if it's, you know, I know it's rated for 12 MGD, but there may be a component that if we replace something, a pump or something like that, could get more. Or maybe it's lacking and we need to get it up to 12. So there's, there's a lot of different things we can look at. Al mentioned that, you know, physical evaluation under item C, and we'll look at some of the equipment that is lived its life and needs to be replaced, either replaced or something with new technology.
So how, this is part of this analysis, so you said 12 MGD rating now, is, is somebody doing a forecast of growth relative to this too? And so, I mean, so I don't even, of the 12 MGD, are we using 80% of it now, or, or, I'm assuming that fluctuates?
Yeah, it fluctuates. I don't think you have an issue right now with capacity, however, as part of the, in the PER, we do population forecasts, and we look at where we think you'll be in 10, 20 years on capacity. So that, yes, that is part of the process.
That's curious, okay. Quick, quick question while you're on there. Is there an affordability analysis that's included as part of this? Is that something you're going to get to?
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly will be doing that as part of the rate analysis.
So if you hadn't related to that, just a couple questions, okay? So what is, so this is rate analysis, 5,000 gallons a month, is that typical residential use? Okay, just curious.
Some people are this, some people, you got a lot of kids in the house?
Yeah, showers.
Teenage, showers. Yeah, yes.
Our bills went down by three quarters.
Of course, if you water your lawn a lot, that affects that too, right?
Yeah.
Because it's directly a proportion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they take it from your water meter reading.
Gotcha.
Item B, I've already mentioned the capital improvement plan, we're looking at certain things, that, the flow diagrams, layouts, all sorts of things, and then we'll look at whatever we come up with, we're going to come up with cost. At the end of the PER, we will have a application for funding. It's not obligatory for you to proceed with that funding, but you have to give it in to SRF to be considered. Now, I'll talk about that in a little bit. Item F, the items that we're really looking at right now is sludge management improvements, disinfection improvements, and the two miscellaneous equipment upgrades, and then the two projects Jenny mentioned, the Monon Storm Service Lift Station and Lafayette Barker Storm Service Lift Room. So those are the concentrations that we're going to look at.
So on Lafayette, I mean, there was an issue relative to need early on, I think that was a decided that it could be a kind of a holding kind of thing relative to stormwater retention? Is that, is that still part of the plan, or is it?
That was being evaluated by Housing Associates, and I believe recently, they submitted a draft plan to the Redevelopment Commission. We have not had a chance to look at the results of that study yet.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it up, but somebody impacts this in some way.
Yes.
Very much so. And then the last item there, the asset management plan, we will get that back up to standards, to SRF standards. Anybody have any questions on the scope? All right, flip back towards the front.
I have a quick question about scope, just for the benefit of the board. I know that the agreement is structured where this is a lump sum, basically flat fee arrangement.
Correct.
And it seems as though in the body of the agreement itself, you normally would have a breakdown of what percentage of the flat fee is allocated to each area of the services you're providing. I don't know that that tie is necessarily there, is there any way you can speak to that for the benefit of the board? How much is being attributed to which portion of the scope?
On the three reports, I would say the asset management's probably in the, not use percentages, 15%. The, and we've done a man error estimate on this, so I'm trying to remember, I don't have it in front of me. The PER is probably 35%. Capital improvement plan is probably 50%.
And based on your experience, do you think that there's any likelihood that the district would be able to recoup any of that funding if you were to go to IFA or wherever else you might get the funding? Sometimes they'll approve it, and sometimes they don't.
They could roll that into your major loan, yes. And that happens quite frequently.
Sometimes they'll specifically tell you, no.
Sometimes they won't, and sometimes they will, it just depends on the situation, and also depends on where you score on the.
I'm really asking just so you explain it more for them, like I get how it works, but I want them to understand.
Sure, no, I understand. And sometimes it, you know, you're exactly right, sometimes they will approve it, sometimes they won't, and I've had, I've been in both situations. Most, most of the time, they do approve it.
So, so if they don't approve it, then we follow in the open market, is that it?
It comes out, well, the, the amount for the reports would come out of your budget. They would come out of your budget until we closed on a loan, and then you would get reimbursed.
Right.
So that would work. And back to financing, depending on what number this ends up being, once we get all the reports done, you have to go to SRF to even get to the bond bank. And so SRF is the best option, as Jenny mentioned, the rates are below market rate. As Jenny mentioned, the rates are below market rate. And if that doesn't, if you feel like the need, or the SRF is going to be five years away, let's say, and you want to do something sooner, you can always go to the bond bank.
And the IDFA rate is, say below, is it 4%? Is it 6%?
2.9, I think, off the last one. We just did one.
Is there something we will need to rush into to get the 2.9?
No, but you do have to qualify based on the report we provide. And then they do a project priority list every June or July called the PPL. And that's advertised on their website and you can see each community and where they land and how much they're asking for.
I see.
So, okay, so if you flip a little bit more to the front, on page three, let's start on page two. Schedule, talk a little bit about schedule. We're going to be working with Baker Tilly on completion times that the mayor mentioned that she wanted to maybe see if we could get something done this year on rates and be in the ballpark sometime. So what we wanted to do is within 60 days, get some preliminary cost estimates from Baker Tilly into you guys so you can understand what we're looking at. And once that's done, we will plan to complete all the reports prior to March 31st of next year. The deadline for SRF is April 1st. And they will take everything that is applied for at that time, April 1st, and put it into their list. And you'll rank and score based on several factors. Rates are one of the factors. The amount that you're asking for is a factor. Completeness of the documentation is a factor. There's several things they look at.
But what about things like poverty rate today?
They definitely look at that.
Okay.
In fact, there are special rates for poverty. It's lower than the below market rate I mentioned, Jenny. So, and then page three, the lump sum amount of 240 is what we're proposing and this is only for the study and report phase. This, and this is for the three reports we're going to give to you. The, in this document, there is, if you're familiar with this, EJCC goes through design and construction admin and construction inspection. All those items are not in this contract. It's just a report.
So in front of us today, are you looking for approval of 240K? Is that it?
That's it.
And then, I guess my more general question, Chris, then probably Tim, is is there any competition relative to this? Is 240 a good number? Is it a, I mean, do we have any feel for that or not? Or is this just, we need to spend anyway? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Well, let me give you some perspective on that. This is a professional service. It does not need to be bid out. In fact, if it was bid out, we probably wouldn't be, we don't typically bid work. The PERs and these reports are typically about 1 to 1.5% of the total. And our ballpark right now is, and this is a, I hate to even give this number, but the ballpark is what we're looking at is somewhere around 30 million. So we're well under the 1% threshold. So, and I can tell you, when we did our hour justification on this budget, we were much higher than 240. And we just dropped it.
Well, I think one thing is that we will be working with Dan and we have Adam here at the plant, serving as your superintendent. So he's able to gather the information and support those efforts so that it's a little more efficient in what we're doing here and getting all the testing that we need and working with your people too to help supplement all of the information, including assisting with gathering information on the asset management plan. So I think that's one way you could keep that, those hours down because we are already here working with your, with your plant staff. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the advantage of having a PER. Having that document and that plan in place then allows you to apply for other grant sources, not necessarily just SRF money. So once we have this document, there's other opportunities. And I think one we're going to look at pretty hard is the BRIC grant, which is funding from FEMA. And there's certain types of projects that relate to, you know, hazard mitigation that could qualify for some of that type of funding. So having these reports done opens up a lot more on the grant funding area besides just SRF and just funding, financing. So if we can get grant money, obviously that 30 million, you're not borrowing that, you know, that much. We'll try to buy down what we can on those types of things. And, you know, a couple of those projects I think that I'm particularly targeting are the disinfection and the replacing the chlorine and the sulfur dioxide gas with different things.
Sodium hydro, which is a liquid. The gas is really a hazardous chemical and it's dangerous.
So that is just an example of what's, the other thing is anything related to flooding. So the stormwater components that we're talking about could be eligible for that type of funding because if that station goes down, you've got a hazard situation with homeowners and flooding and that type of thing. So those are the types of things that we're also going to go after once we have the document prepared.
So, Mr., I like to ask questions today. As, and again, the engineering services, not some other projects, there's been some question relative to the charges that are in there. Tim, have you looked at this relative to our budget and review invoices and is there flexibility or not? Or is this more or less take it or leave it?
I have not had a chance to really go through this. I mean, the services are all pretty standard for what we would need to do for a PER for the wastewater treatment plant. Like I said earlier, my concern is if we're using this to start working on justification for rate increases, we need to have a rate increase for the collection system. Being the city engineer, I see failures of our sewers all over the place.
Sure.
We've been very enliquing in our maintenance of our systems. It's been years talking to some of the sanitary district personnel that we've done lining for any of our old sewers and those have been meager at best, just short pieces of it by the prison on the oldest system. I'd like to, you know, this is a start, but it's not enough to really handle what expenses we're going to see in the not-too-distant future for maintaining our system, which hasn't been done in 20 years.
But that impacts rates too, though, right? So in anticipation, we do this project for 30 million and depending on how the numbers come out, some level of rate increase, then we might have another episode of review of something on a grant or scale and it could be a second type of thing.
Yeah, I think our team does a lot of that, what you're talking about, Tim, on SCS work and all kinds of stuff like that. We've just finished three of them and we do a lot of that too. And so we can, if you guys want, we can look at that. But that, this doesn't include that, but.
Doing this doesn't help us.
No, well, that's, that's the point. So in terms of, but the other point is not much you can chew, right? So I think that we ought to have, and I, assuming our leadership's supportive of this, I'm fine with it. But I do think we should have in a general sense, a longer-term, five or 10-year strategy that has some things, you know, outlined in some calendar to where, we'll do this piece now, anticipate it will take six months. Well, this is almost six months here, right?
You referred to like the infrastructure improvement.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, whatever, the system really, it's critical infrastructure.
This to me is great as an asset management plant for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
This includes, the asset management plant includes your whole system.
Our collection system.
It includes everything.
How do we determine the values and costs there if we're not doing an SSES? Because that's not it.
Right, right.
So are you saying that negative impacts this report or?
Well, I'm just saying, we can't base a serious, accurate rate increase on just the value of the wastewater plant maintenance where we have 160-some miles of sewers out there that need to be analyzed and routinely improved, cleaned, repaired and that, which I don't know that sanitary district has been doing. And I know we have failed payments around from failed sewers around that I've been chasing ever since I've been here as a city engineer.
They could, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we're starting through that process of defining that, that maintenance cycle and how much can be maintained and televising and looking at those things currently. I think we're, we're trying to get a handle of what you have going on right now. And I think that was one of the reasons not to put it in here now. We know that we have a deadline with SRF and the plant.
SRF is what's driving, at least the short term.
Right.
A piece of a future plan.
But I know, you know, Al and I have talked about, and we've just gotten access to the GIS system and we've talked about, you know, the efficiencies of televising. We're actually getting some equipment demoed next week on helping identify deficiencies in the sewer system itself. So I think, I think we're trying to get a better handle on that, but we focused on the plant first mainly because of the SRF deadlines.
I just want to make sure my public board members understand that this is only a piece.
Thank you, because I had.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's only a piece, so.
Now, the asset management plan will have that, will have the inventories of everything in it, but it won't have the SSES.
Like the SRF plan that we did with Long Beach when we had that some, a couple of years ago, we were able to get a 2% loan for that, for that project based upon that.
Okay.
So that was very good at that time.
It appears timely to me. I just, I just, as Tim suggested, I want to just understand a little bit more of the overall. And I do think we should have a comprehensive plan that's available for people to see what we're planning to do, at least in a few big bullets.
Yeah.
Then also it is comforting to know, maybe in some respects scary to know, that, you know, we're really low on rates, which is obviously good for our residents.
Yeah.
But it isn't necessarily good for keeping the plant operating efficiently.
Or the collection.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much. And that was what I was going to say in Al opening up and, you know, first of all, us finding out it's been 12 years since we've had a rate increase. And then comparison to some of the other cities, towns that have it every five years or something, just shows how behind we are.
I wish everything else had had a buy was on 2012.
Good, I'll be, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that helped a lot because I was like, wow, and understanding what's gone on the past 12 years. So, and with the presentations, I think it's very well presented and we always kind of lean on our city engineer over here. And Don has asked some really great questions, so.
Yeah, go ahead. There's one more thing, okay.
You know, given the nature of the depth of the preliminary reports and some of the costs involved, work with General Manager Chris Zgulski, this sheet here we're handing out, there's been several staff departures from the district this year. So we just wanted to kind of quantify for these different positions, operations manager, financial manager, engineer two left earlier this year, customer account rep retired, staff accountant left recently, chief operator process control was promoted temporarily to plant superintendent, so on and so forth. So we have the yearly salary equivalent, yearly salary from our sanitary operation maintenance fund, health benefit per employee, total health and benefit payment sum, and then what part of the year their position will be vacant. So we kind of reduce that annual cost based on the opening for the rest of the year and then we add it all up, it's potential cost avoidance of about $400,000. So just wanted to kind of provide some context to the board with some of these staff changes with departures. These roles have not been filled, most likely will not be filled, you know, till maybe late this year, early next year. Now, we are having Adam from Christopher Burke do some of the plant superintendent things, city controllers office help them with some of these things. So some of these savings are being kind of used to keep the work being done. But as the board's looking at, you know, this presentation today on the engineering needs to go forward from a cash flow perspective, want to give the board some context of some of the cost avoidance that's kind of occurring over the next few months to kind of level things out till we get to a point where we'll have the rate study done and a better financial picture moving forward.
I might add, just since my start in May of this year, along with Christopher Burke group with Jenny and Al and Adam, had dinner every day, you know, from either phone call away or where they've been on site. So Al's been on site every single day. So with that, we've had Dan Kutchal and his MS group came in two months ago and took over the whole plant to try to figure out what our issues are too. So they're not just new to this, they're not just starting or just proposing something. They've really been a part of this since May of this last year. And we've been able, through them, cut a lot of the things that have been wrong here. So I think I really support both groups as they work together towards this final call. So my recommendation would be to accept this.
Get a motion.
I need to accept Chris's motion for seconds.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the summary.
Thank you.
And they go, just keep rolling out. Okay, he's rolling it.
But think about any other utility. Your electric utility doesn't go full year, your water utility doesn't go full year.
I was waiting for that.
I mean, your internet goes up.
Are we going to a jernke move?
Oh, sorry. Everybody wanted to sit in the house for a while. Now, make a motion for adjourned.
So moved.
Second. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I have a question for you.
Yes.